Welcome to the Hampden Town Council meeting for February 9th, 2015. This time, could you join me with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B, consent agenda. Has anybody got anything on the consent agenda they want to bring up? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Item C, public comments. At this time, the public has a chance to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Would you please give us your name and your street, please?
Mr. Chairman, Hampden Town Councilor Jeremy Williams, 1334 Kamala Road North. I just wanted to welcome and congratulate the new council that's seated here. So far, from what I've seen, you guys have done a great job. I appreciate the cooperation and work you've done so far. I know you've seen past councils in the past with challenges on how they got along and how they worked for business. I just, you know, I just wanted to kind of review a couple of things and bring some things to your attention that have happened in the past that maybe you guys could move forward on. Back a few years ago, I served on the Citizens Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, and that committee showed me that town politics can basically be put aside and people can work together to an end result. And in that committee, everyone was respectful. We found common ground. We ended up turning around what was a very overreaching plan and turned it into something that was some common ground for everyone. Going forward, I mean, that was a pretty good example of the way communities should work and should come together. And I just, you know, wanted to reiterate that Hampden is for everyone. In that comp plan, we talked about affordable housing. We had a group of people's idea of what affordable housing was, another group of people's ideas what affordable housing was. The idea that was formed by folks from away wasn't what we adopted. And I'm here tonight to, you know, just appeal to the council to continue in the direction that has already been started, where we start to look at ways to enable anyone to live in the town of Hampden, not just people that are of advanced means and incomes, but also can homestead, they can build a house, they can saw some logs off their property and go back to the ways it was in the 70s, the Hampden I knew, the Hampden I grew up in. And I just wanted to talk about that. There are ways, and in the past council that I served on, we saw councilors work in ways to bring in the community together on projects that normally would have been funded out of taxpayer proceeds, and there's ways to get things done. And a perfect example of that, and I'm going to mention some names, Gene Lawless and Jeremy Jones worked together, two politically opposed people with two different ideas but shared a common interest, and that common interest was the old Wreck area, the paper mill park. And they both had an appreciation of that, and that was a common piece that they could work together on to see that come to fruition that everybody could enjoy. And I thought that was a key. That was something we had to move kind of forward on. You know, the big thing in Hampden is we've got to really send that message out that Hampden's open for business. And I think, I think we are. I think it's headed that way. And I'd like to see more of that. We've got a public hearing tonight that addresses some of the future development in Hampden, good example of it. And I, you know, I got a little email from Dean the other day with some examples on what's going on and in what direction we're heading in. I really like it. I like the idea of the triangle out here and how that's being developed. And I think we really need to kind of stick to that path if possible. I think it's a great direction to go in. I think it's a good way to keep our taxes now as individuals while at the same time being able to develop those areas into what makes sense for business areas. That area was identified in the Comprehensive Plan, and I don't think anybody disagreed with the fact that that makes sense for Hampden. That was a really good, good idea. So, you know, that being said, there are other means in which we can save and keep our taxes so Hampden is an affordable place to live. The other piece I wanted to kind of talk about is instead of working in ways to try to save that little 37%, 38% that we spend in this town, we really need to pressure the schools to do their piece in keeping our tax rates low in Hampden. So with all that, let's bring on the business, and I really appreciate what you guys are doing. I think, I think you've got a big job ahead of you, some challenges, but again, challenge the schools, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, Lisa Carter from Hampden. Snow country now, I guess. I stand tonight because I came out on a cold, cold night because I'm very discouraged at what's going on, what I hear, the tone. I know the previous speaker talked about cooperation, and that's lovely as long as you're not cooperating against the taxpayer. As long as the cooperation isn't for the paid, what I call the paid lobbyists that are talking to you day in and day out, those are the people that get paid, those are the people that are paid here tonight, that are most likely going to have most of the say tonight. Then there are the few of us who came out and took time away from our families and our work, and because we don't want you to forget who you're here to represent, and I think that happens. The previous speaker said they served on the town council. I served in the state legislature. I know how hard it is sometimes to remember that you are there to protect the taxpayer and the citizen, not to serve those who are employed by our tax dollars. I was thinking this, this weekend, that many of us, you read in the paper, I notice the Bangor Daily News this year, you read in the paper all the crime going up, and so many of us have worked really hard to try to secure what we have accrued through our work efforts, the sweat of our brow, saving, and we've put alarm systems in our house, we've put better locks on our doors, we put motion detector lights out. We, you know, we try to protect what we've worked so hard to get, and by a simple raise of a hand here, even tonight, you authorize somebody to take from us yet again. And I'd like to remind you of who, when you raise that hand, might seem so simple, especially when so many people are working and emailing and talking to you that get paid well to do so. I'd like to remind you of some of my friends and neighbors in the area, that you're supposed to be here as our security system. You're supposed to be here to protect us. That's why we elected you. You asked us to trust you and elect you, and we did. We did, not the people paid to be here. And I'd like to remind you of the people, like the widow that I know, who can hardly pay her taxes, was having firewood cut from her property to try to pay her taxes, and now she's shut down, she can't do it anymore. So she doesn't know how she's going to pay her taxes, and we're being told that taxes are going to go up again. And how about the young person who is trying to live the dream and have a home? And as we know, again, you can read in the paper, there's not too many full-time jobs out there, so they're working multiple part-time jobs, and they don't have Cadillac health insurance plans or anything like that. And once again, with a simple raise of a hand, they're going to be impacted significantly. Or the self-employed or the small business who doesn't get a TIF, who has to pay their share of property taxes and expenses, whose, whose insurance went up 50-plus percent this year. I've heard people talk about on this council that they heard from citizens who elected them, and that those citizens don't want their taxes raised, that they're paying enough, and when this individual brings that up, it's met with rolling eyes and disgust. Well, I'm here not talking about the TIF. I'm here talking about that all of you in this audience watch tonight, there's a team that you're supposed to be on, and the team is supposed to be for the taxpayer. We're the ones who elected you. And watch tonight and see which team your elected representative is on.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? With that, I'll put an end to the public comments. Moving on, policy and agenda, news, presentation and awards, we have none. Public hearings. A is application for vicular license received from Angela King, Maximum Fitness Studio and Health Spa at 8 Main Road South. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion from the council?
Make a motion that we accept the license received from Angela King in reference to Maximum Fitness Studio and Health Spa.
A second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, next is the Colbrook Road and AmeriMain Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District. And at this time, I'm going to have Dean Bennett, the Economic Development Director, come and speak and explain the process from the beginning to now, and then after he is done, we'll open it up for public comment. Dean, thank you.
Thank you, David. Good evening. Tax Increment Financing with a Credit Enhancement Agreement has been used in Hampden since 2001. In fact, between 2001 and 2008, there were five businesses that received a Credit Enhancement Agreement, Credit Enhancement Payback, and the last of those will be expiring in 2018. The use of the TIF is what got them here, Grave Supermarket, Coffee Hill, Pepsi, D.L. Fox, Hampden Properties, and Havelock Estes and Curran. Fifty percent of the taxes were captured and paid back to the business, and the remainder went into the general fund. The Economic Development Department was charged with helping make Hampden a more business-friendly community. I think we've been quite successful at that. One of the things we've done is we've created a development review team, which is to minimize business frustration, provide clear guidance and assistance to ensure regulatory compliance in a productive and streamlined manner. A business advocacy, we've surveyed 100 businesses, sit down, with sit-down interviews, with identified zoning obstacles on a case-by-case basis, and we've advocated for their removal or amendments to the zoning ordinance, which have proven problematic to those businesses. We've reviewed permitting processes and analyzed and improved the accommodate, the business timelines. We had pre-construction meetings, construction inspections, designed to identify issues that pose unnecessary expenses or delays for the developer. And we've identified short- and long-term initiatives to council subcommittees in support of encouraging development, anticipating development needs, strategically capitalizing on relationships, and promoting collaboration among business investors and landowners. The results of our efforts are now is that our business community is actually speaking for us in testimonials. During that, also that same timeframe, Angler's Restaurant, McLaughlin Seafood, Central Maine Diesel, White Sporting Goods, Rite Aid, Katadon Trust, Hamley Family Medical, and others, all located here, none of them received a TIF, nor a Credit Enhancement Agreement, nor asked for one. This evolution continues. We've evolved to have a greater perspective, a greater town perspective. We grew to better understand the usefulness and benefit of the town using their share of the TIF capture to advance economic development initiatives. The benefit of the TIF is you can use it to entice and attract development, but at the same time, the other equal benefit is the sheltering of those resources on the benefit of the community. We didn't do that until 2003, I'm sorry, 2013, when Dennis Paper approached us, a major business with expansion plans and an interest in shopping for a new location and a building. The use of TIF kept them here, and it's the first time that, in fact, the town captured 100% of our share of the TIFs and actually allocated it through this process for economic development. Most recently, the Hampden Triangle is experiencing all kinds of development and opportunity, and we've capitalized on that to the best we possibly could. For 47 years, the Hampden Triangle has been designated for commercial and industrial development. Most recently, the Comprehensive Plan has identified the Colbrook Road as a place for business expansion for retail and service-based businesses. Recent initiatives within the park, as I'm sure you remember, the Business Park Expansion, Sargent Corporation, we have an 18 or 36 lot subdivision, pre-approved, pre-permitted, 18 lots built, with very little hope of it developing further because of the pledges that the previous councils made, that the taxpayer would not underwrite the development of the plan. We initiated an RFP, ultimately resulting in a development deal with Sargent Corp., multimillion-dollar investment, creating a future tax base on land that we effectively grow hay on. The LL Bean property, there again, it seems that the private sector is providing a lot of potential opportunity for commercial and industrial development up in the triangle. One of the things we've done very effectively is that we're talking about utilizing the LL Bean property, preserving that portion of it which is developable, and capitalizing on that portion of it that is not developable, that is environmentally entangled, if you will, and by utilizing that undevelopable land as potential mitigation for, in support of commercial industrial development, allows us to effectively sell or gain revenue from land that can't be developed. That's something that the PND Committee of the council has talked about. The Ammo Park, seeing what's going on in the Business Park, initiates an infrastructure investment, builds a road, waiting for sewer and water to arrive via the Sargent Corporation plan. And then, and most recently, the MRC being attracted to us in our proactive strategy, is talking about a potential $60 million investment in the construction of a mile-long highway, one-third into the triangle distance, to be accepted by the town for the benefit of the town. There again, roads get laid, infrastructure gets expanded, so far at no cost to the taxpayer, providing development opportunity and land in which to do so. TIF, how does the Hampden Triangle connect to AMIRA and vice versa? Timing, timing, very simple. In May of 2012, I received a call from the Bangor Hydro indicating their intent to consolidate operations. They are looking at a number of sites in the region, one of those of which was their site that they had off from Penobscot Meadow Drive here in Hampden, on a piece of land that actually straddles the town line. What are we, what are we talking about? The Hydro asked if Hampden was interested in talking about some incentives and if we were interested in seeking that development on the Hampden side of the line, ideally, was my thought. The development being an 18 to $20 million investment, the potential for $85,000 in annual excise tax, once the administrative offices get located here to Hampden, which is part of Phase Two of the development. Needless to say, the response was timely, encouraged a development proposal from the Hydro, which they come through to the PND Committee, negotiations began. Results of those negotiations, the Planning and Development Committee sent the proposal to the council with a recommendation to approve. About that time, the AMIRA and merger, AMIRA and the Bangor Hydro merger began, which significantly delayed the process. My concern at the time was is that we were going to lose the potential of the development, given the change in administration, given the timeframe. So what I did is I proposed to the council the credit enhancement terms and asked for their approval to give the Hydro some security, some comfort, in that they could go forward with their development plans with some level of commitment on their terms, the benefit that benefit them. Then, at that point in time, the question becomes is what do we do with the capture? You know, what do we do with the town's share of the Bangor Hydro taxes? Planning and Development Committee met with Noreen Norton, whom I'm going to introduce in just a second, and directed Noreen to, and prioritize the development areas of the town, and asked her to develop a product, which you have in front of you, to, that would allow the town to remain flexible, responsive, and strategic in the allocation of those captured resources, and ideally be utilized in all the identified prioritized areas, those areas being the Colbrook Road, the Triangle, and downtown. After that delay, the potential loss, and the potential loss at capture at stake, most recently, Noreen and I expedited that draft back to the PND Committee with the hopes that they would move it forward to the county council for the public hearing this evening. That's the road that it took to get here. It was three years, three PND Committees, and three councils, but it's finally in front of you. In essence, the AMIRA capture, the town's use of their share of the Hydro resources, Hydro tax dollars, which over a 20-year period is about $4 million, is intended to provide for the strategic investment of resources in the development of the Hampden Triangle and the categories allowed, in those categories allowed expenditures as may be warranted and necessary. It's a source of revenues, 100 cents on a dollar, if you will, that can be utilized to advance the development of the Hampden Triangle and expansion of infrastructure within. It also contains a, categories of continued investment in the areas allocated by Dennis Paper, their trails, the marina, continue investment with these, some of the Hydro dollars in those areas, should the town wish to do so, should that be warranted. And lastly, to establish a mechanism which would pay for a consultant to create a downtown district in downtown Hampden. Now, reason that is in there is because the PND Committee wanted that, wanted the potential for it, the focus be on a downtown improvement, revitalization, beautification, whatever comes along over the next 20 years. Downtown districts are unique in their classification in the TIF statute. You can actually take resources from other districts within the community and channel them into the downtown district. That is what this is designed to do, should we, should the town go there at some point in the future. Hydro tax dollars can be utilized to, on downtown projects within that district area. Bottom line is the allocation of the town's share of the AMIRA TIF places the town in a position of negotiation with regard to infrastructure expansion, and it maximizes our chance of increasing the tax base of commercial and industrial development in the community. The residential tax base has been carrying 87% of the tax load. Here in the community, 13%, 14% has been commercial development. Commercial development doesn't have children. Commercial development doesn't cost you, per se, when compared to a residential tax base. A $500,000 house, taxes on the annual, the current mill rate is about $8,000. Educational costs for one student is in the $7,000, $8,000 range. So a half a million dollar house with one child is a break-even in terms of educational cost. It doesn't talk about the cost of public safety, public works, or any of the other functions of municipal government. Residential, relying on residential tax base, unless you have a really high-value housing in your community, will not sustain. Having a commercial industrial tax base from which to pull those resources is a much healthier community, and I think that with the approval of this TIF and the potential use of those resources as allocated, would go a long way in helping the community of Hampden better prepare themselves for the future going forward. Noreen Norton is the consultant that was provided to us by AmeriMain, and Noreen has crafted that document in discussions with me and the PND Committee. And if it'd be okay, I'd like to introduce Noreen to make comments on what her experience has been and the process that she's undertaken.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Mayor, Council. The first thing I'd like to do is just expand a little bit on what Dean alluded to about the tax shift, if I might, just to clarify what that tax shift means for the town, and then talk a little bit about the process that we went through. The, the TIF, the project, over the 25 years of the TIF term, is estimated to project, to create about 4.66 million in new tax revenues. Of that 6.6 million, the town would, without a TIF, would stand to lose 3.9 million. So say 4 million of that 6.6 million would be lost to, lost education subsidy, lost municipal sharing, municipal revenue sharing, and an increase in county tax because of the new valuation would mean that all of those things are based on valuation. It would mean that your municipal revenue sharing would drop, your education subsidy would drop, and you'd be paying a higher portion of the county tax. That's without the TIF. So that means that without the TIF, you would have available to you only 2.68, 2.7 million dollars of that 4.4 million. With the TIF, even after providing the credit enhancement to AMIRA, the town has about $4 million. So you are clearly, in terms of actual dollars available, you're ahead of the game. That tax shift value, and it's different for every community, it depends on the existing value within the community, it depends on a number of factors, but that tax shift value for Hampden is 59%. So that means that for every new tax dollar you get without a TIF, you get 41 cents of your tax dollars available for you to spend, and the balance, the 59%, is used to offset those changes in education subsidy, revenue sharing, and county tax. I just wanted to make sure, that's a really important factor about the TIF, a really important fact. So as Dean alluded to, once the terms of the credit enhancement were negotiated between the town and the company, we needed to write the development program, which is part of the process, and a key part of the development program is how the town would use TIF revenues. And I've been doing, I've done over 30 TIFs in the past 20 years in the state, many, many of them being for municipalities, and have an in-depth understanding of what the TIF program can accommodate for municipalities. When DECD reviews these TIFs, the, what's within the district boundaries, which is typically the company project or the developer project, is usually an easy, okay, that meets, DCD's role is to say whether the projects meet statutory, are compliant with the statute. And so those are usually easy, yep, they're within the district, they comply with statute. But the town projects are often looked at very carefully and scrutinized a great deal. So it was important to have somebody representing you as a town that understood that process. And also, what I've always put out to towns when I'm working with them is to have maximum flexibility, that you're looking at a 25-year TIF, you know what your needs are today, you know what is important today, and maybe for two or three years down the road, but you don't know what a council sitting here 20 years from now, 15 years from now, is going to want to be able to do. So we try to build those projects within the statute, within what's allowed by statute, but we build them in the most flexible way possible. Flexibility is the mantra, so that if you decide you want to do something, you look at your list of approved projects and you say, okay, we can do that, it's right here, it fits within this category. If there's something you want to do that's not on the list, if you take things off of the list of what's available in statute, there's a whole list of things that you can do. If you don't, if you choose not to include any of those, and then later, 10, 15 years down the road, you say, well, we'd really like to do this type of program, and it's not there, even if it's in the statute, you'd have to go back through an amendment process with a public hearing and the entire process in order to have that flexibility. So we tried to design the town project portion of this development program to have more. So we tried to design the town project portion of this development program to have maximum flexibility to meet the needs of council over the full 25-year term of the TIF. And that's all I really want to say right now. I'm happy to answer, as the public hearing goes on, I'm available to answer any questions or, or if you have any questions now, I would, I guess, it's, you're welcome.
Mayor Ryder, could I ask Ms. Norton a few questions? Thank you. I know you spoke, Terry McAvoy from District 3. I know you spoke about the development of these, you know, of this document here. I attended almost all of the meetings, the committee meetings, the P and D meetings of the last three years. I don't really recall at any time, you know, you being present or this document being discussed at all, and certainly no numbers or any estimates or what was going to be on it or anything was discussed at the committee meeting, so where did you get your direction from, from whom?
No, I did meet, I met twice with the Planning and Development Committee. I had the spreadsheet, if you will, of projects, and there's three tiers, and I had it broken out into three tiers of what the project scrutiny is. There's the projects that are within the district boundaries, as I said, are usually pretty easy to pass through DCD's review. There's projects that are outside the district boundaries but made necessary by, and finally, it's economic development and other types of activities that support economic development and growth within the community. And I met with, I met with Sue and Dean Bennett individually to talk about some of the potentials, and then we met with the, I met with the committee as well. I can't tell you the dates, you'd have to go back to minutes or meeting notes, but I have met with the committee.
No, that's fine. I just don't recall any numbers or any dollar figures being discussed at any time.
Oh, at that point, we had the spreadsheets from the, we knew what the project estimates were and the TIF projections, what you have at the back of the document, we had those numbers in place at that time.
Right, I do recall seeing those, I just don't recall seeing the ones about the development, you know.
Oh, you mean the project costs?
Correct.
Those weren't developed early on. I mean, the actual project costs really, they're there as estimates, you're not bound by those project costs. The project, they're there to have number values, but as you go on, you can have a project that's listed there that you choose not to fund at all, and you don't ever put a single penny towards it. You can have other projects that you have $10,000 in a budget number, and it ends up costing $110,000, and that's not a problem. You can move, based on the revenues you have on year-to-year basis, or you can bank revenues for a number of years until you have enough revenues to fund a particular project that you want to fund.
Thank you. Do you recall when you finished this document, this project development, you know, document? Do you have any idea, or, you know, do you recall when you finished this, when it was done, when it was a completed item?
Just, really, to say finished was fairly recent, November, October, November of this past year was, we were wrapping up many of the final details of it.
What, if any, adverse effect would the timeless submission of a conditional application have on Emera Maine?
We don't make a conditional application.
No, I say, if you did, I mean, DCD allows submission of conditional applications, primarily, you know, I guess from what I understand, that the time crunch now is only to make sure that this application gets put into the DCD by February 27th in order to secure the original assessed value as of April of 2013.
That's correct, but you do not make a conditional submittal. If DCD receives an application and it's not complete, or there's questions, they have the option of providing a conditional approval, which could lock in a, the original assessed value without having the full document approved, but you don't make a conditional submittal. You submit what you want to have approved, and if there's things, if there's serious things lacking in the document and she doesn't have the information she needs to make the approval, she could, they could provide a conditional approval.
I guess I'm just getting conflicting information with the DCD, but that's fine. Do you believe there is any sort of legal commitment that, between the town of Hamden and Emera Maine at this point, right now, is there any legal contracts of any kind that have been, you know?
The Town Council of Hamden voted to approve the credit enhancement allocation. As far as legal, I'm not an attorney, so I can't speak to the legality of the binding nature of that.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up for public comments. If you could just come up, give your name, your street, and try to keep it within five minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, I can do that. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. My name's Jerry Shassay, I'm a resident, 71 Aaron's Way here in Hamden, and I'm also the president of Emera Maine, and I had to write that down, that part down, because I know how many people, for myself and our employees, how difficult it is to drop the I'm here tonight with about 10 or so of my fellow employees, of our 37 employees that live in Hamden, that, and we'd like to express our collective support for the approval of this TIF for our Hamden operations facility. Our field employees are really excited about moving to Hamden, into the new, modern facility that we're building, and they're moving from our Lower Main Street facility, for the most part, that hinges around a building that was built for and during the years of the trolleys in Bangor. So it's long overdue. With our roots in Bangor since the early part of this last, of the last century, I'm sure you can imagine how big a decision it was for us to move out of Hamden, or, sorry, out of Bangor. And I can just tell you, our lower Main Street employees are really excited about moving, and I can speak for the rest of my colleagues who are not moving in the timeframe of next May, they'll be moving, hopefully, as we anticipate, building our corporate office in Hamden, probably by the end of 2019. We're all excited about being out in this area at a new facility on one campus where we can efficiently run our business. So I just want to finish by thanking the town officials for doing the work that it took to get to this point, and let you know how much we really appreciate it. Thank you.
My name's Rich Armstrong, 109 Kennebec Road. Can everybody hear me okay? Good evening. First of all, I don't think I've heard it tonight. I'd like to say from, as a resident, most of my life, of Hamden, I'd like to thank Emera Maine for coming to Hampton. It's a big deal, it's a lot of money, we have another one that looks like it might go in a mile off the road. That's a big deal, it's huge. How many businesses, how many residences would you have to build to equal the taxes that one business like that is paying? It's huge, it's huge. So my story is, we were a Bangor company, I'm the president of the Snowman Group, it's a printing and mailing company in Herman, and we were in Bangor for 60 years, and we needed to, similar to what Jerry said, we were in a building built in 1861, we needed to move, we were operating out of two facilities. So we looked all around, and gee, someone brought up this weird word, TIF. What the heck is a TIF? Well, I know what a TIF is real well now, because if it wasn't for that TIF, that's exactly why we moved to Herman, because it helped our business grow, it gave us a chance to help pay off the new accumulated debt, it helped us build a brand-new, we're about a $28,000 square foot building with 30-plus employees. Without a TIF, people aren't going to come to Hampton, why would they? They'd go to Herman. We have great proximity to the highway, but you've got to have a TIF, and we're arguing over where to put the money? Well, you need money if there's another company like this one that goes off a mile off the highway, and they say, listen, we've got two options, we're going to go to Hampton or we're going to go to Herman, but we want you to put that sewer and water a mile out. If you don't have the money, you can't bargain. If you take that money and you put it into a TIF account specifically for economic development, you'll have that money to be able to bargain with big companies who come to Hamden. I love to pay lower taxes, believe me. My taxes have grown tremendously since I lived, I bought my house in 1992 and have lived here most of my life. I've seen them go up, I don't like my taxes going up, but if you want them to go down, attract business. Businesses moving here and employing people, every piece of equipment that that business has in that building pays personal property taxes as well, not just real estate taxes. So it's huge. So I know that we're sitting here talking about, where's this money going? Well, I don't know the specific languages of the TIF, I have seen some of the language in the TIF agreement, but it should go to economic development, come on. Didn't this woman just say that without it, it's 2.7 million, and with it, it's 4 million? That's easy math, that's really easy math. So I'm just telling you, as a business owner, if Herman didn't have a TIF, I wouldn't be there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Mr. Chair, Town Counselors Jeremy Williams, 1334 Carmel Road North, again. I am an employee of Emera Maine, and I do, my office is at Lower Main Street, and we have crumbling concrete down there. Like Jerry was saying, it's the old trolley shop, we got buried railroad tracks in the concrete in the shop there, and it was time, it was time to move. But you know what? I've watched my taxes steadily go up, you know, some increments over the last few years, and as I mentioned earlier, a lot of it's attributed to the costs from the school. I think we've done a good job kind of trying to manage everything else other than that, but I think this is a win-win. Like Rich said, this is a win-win, that's the only way we're going to really keep our taxes at a fair level and be able to let anyone live here in Hamden, is to bring this type of business in, and it makes sense. As a taxpayer, it makes sense to me. I don't care where I have to work, you know, it doesn't really matter to me as far as, as long as it's a nice facility. This is a big thing for my employees and the people that I work with, and it's a good thing for the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Hi, Lisa Carter from Hamden. I'm glad that all of you live in Hamden from Bangor Hydro, because when the power goes off, I get this feeling I don't need to call, especially when the president lives so close. Yes, exactly. Or Emera, I'm sorry, I said Hydro, didn't I? This is not, for me and for many people, this is not about whether Emera should get a TIF or if Rich little, Rich Armstrong should get a TIF. This is about what happens with a portion of the money that goes back to Hamden, the taxpayer. And so tonight, that's been the thing, you know, you can smooth that over, but that's a big deal. The TIFs that were mentioned prior to Dennis Paper, the grocery store, the CPA firm, et cetera, the 50, they got a 50% TIF, one got a 77% TIF, meaning that they get a discount on the property taxes. And the remaining amount of money went into the general fund, went into the general fund. That's good for the taxpayer, because that means that I think that the general fund, the taxpayers that are spending their hard-earned money on paying these property taxes, I expect that it's going for something besides salaries, and I would think that would be economic development. And when you have lower property taxes, you don't have to give so many TIFs, because people will come to your area because you're paying lower property taxes. So nobody that, you know, I don't think that we're that ignorant in Hamden that we don't get that we need to attract businesses, and we're glad that Emera is here. That's not the issue. The issue is, in this document, there are, this money does not go to the general fund. This is a shift. And then we talk about, well, 4 million, 2 million, well, that's based on the current revenue sharing formula in the state of Maine. I talked to the, I'll, I won't say who I talked to, but I talked to some officials in the state of Maine who are very determined to change that formula, because they don't like revenue sharing how it is now, because it takes a lot of money away from small towns on these TIF issues, et cetera, and so they're working hard, and everybody knows that, to change that. And so if you set this aside, and you have these spending items for the remaining amount of money, that's just what it is, it's spending, and that means our taxes go up for the homeowners. So again, not here to say we shouldn't help, you know, do what we can to get a Mara here or any other business for that matter, so don't turn my electricity off tonight or anything like that. I am an electricity junkie and I appreciate you guys. It's how the rest of the money is going.
My name is Walter Couples, I live at 42 Main Road North. I kind of chuckled about being here tonight, because many years ago, I sat at this, or stood at this podium with another group of fellow citizens on the main road, and we fought McDonald's. You know, how much more righteous cause can you get than that? We later fought Irving, well, we lost that battle, won the McDonald's battle, but the truth is, it was a matter of battle, and the fact is that Hamden lost in that whole situation. And as a result of that, Hamden was seen as anti-business. I think due to the work of Dean and the council over the last couple of years, that image has changed dramatically. The developments that Dean listed tonight were quite impressive, and I think we need to be about more of that, because we have a lot to offer in the town of Hamden, and a big part of it is what we can do to provide a welcome place for businesses to build and grow. So Colbrook Road and the Triangle Development could accelerate this whole process. We need to shift our tax base from dependence on residential to greater dependence on commercial and industrial, so I echo some of the things that were said earlier tonight. Using the Emera TIF to build infrastructure on Colbrook Road makes sense to me, and I strongly encourage you to support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm Jeremy W. Jones Esquire, a landed gentleman of the Partridge Road. TIF, incremental financing. Most of us do not have a problem with the basic premise of tax incremental financing when applied appropriately. There is no problem with the Emera Building Project, and we welcome it. However, some of these special projects are, in my opinion, evidence of someone drunk on taxes. Tax and spend, tax and spend, tax and spend. This smacks of slimy congressional earmarks and someone's back-room agenda dealing. It's wrong for the federal government, and it's wrong for Hamden. Instead, call out your champions, make your case in detail, win or lose, let each project stand on its own merit in a line item before the town budget process. Precedent has been that any additional tax revenue generated by new construction should go into the general fund, and thereby reduce the overall tax burden on the Hamden taxpayer. Have you all so quickly forgotten how our taxes were jacked up last year? Well, they need to be rolled back and reduced at every opportunity. Property tax relief is what we need, not more special projects, not for more bureaucracy, and certainly not for additional town personnel. By the way, I am also a volunteer coordinator for our paper mill park. The Paper Mill Park Patriots and I volunteer our services to maintaining and improving that park at no additional expense to the Hamden taxpayer. Why? Because we want to, because we can, and because we are trying to show that the town can have a nice recreational area without burdening its citizens with ever-increasing taxes. I can tell you that the park patrons appreciate it. One example is trails. We have designed and built a pleasant meandering loop trail We have designed and built a pleasant meandering loop trail at the Papamill Park. Layout and flagging of this trail was done with the assistance of volunteer Dustin Ramsey, Recreation Director Kirk Matthews, and friends. Also, work was done by the Papamill Park Patriots. No substantial trees were cut, just some brush and a few saplings. The spreading of donated wood chips had begun in the end of last year and will continue in the spring. Yes, it is a slow process and if you'd like to help, come join in. The operative theme here is volunteer, donate, no cost to the taxpayer. In short, we must find ways to reduce taxes. TIFs will work. Be very careful how we spend it. And just know this, if you want to start another town range war, usurping our tax base will be lighting the fuse. The whole town is watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
Rich Armstrong, 109 Kennebec Road. So Lisa Kelly had mentioned, she has valid points, but one of the things that she mentioned was that it's still spending. Well, when the money goes into a TIF account, it's investing. It's not spending. When you put your money in your bank account, you're investing it. Or in stocks, you're investing it. It's not spending. What else did anyone mention here? If the town is able to attract a business because they offer a TIF... Something funny? Oh, sorry. Right. Right, right. That's good. Oh, my gosh. Sorry, Lisa. If the town attracts a business because of a TIF, there's no lose situation for the town. They've attracted a new business that's bringing in taxes that we never had before. I mean, that's, are we gaining? Is it a net gain? Of course it is. Now, are we going to gain less if we offer a TIF? Yes, but there's an end date on every TIF. It's not forever. My TIF is up and I can't believe how quickly it went by. There's an end date and I just don't think that we should consider it spending. I think we should consider it as visionary and I think we should consider it as investing. Thank you.
Alex King, 75 Ichabod Lane. A couple of different things I'd like to say is that I'm supportive of this TIF and I kind of can't believe the pushback on this. Because it's not costing the town any money to have Amera come to town. There's no infrastructure costs, no kids to educate. This, you're talking 220 employees, $85,000, $90,000 of excise tax and a huge amount of personal property tax. And they're here, this business is here for possibly 100 years. So you're only talking 20 years of giving them a tax break. It's not costing the town a cent to have them come to town. So I urge you to accept this TIF. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. So do we have a motion from the council?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the TIF for Amera Maine as written.
And have to pass it on to the Department of Economic and Community Development in the state of Maine?
I did want to bring up-
Well, we'll have discussion-
That's after, after we make motions.
We have a motion in a second and then we'll have-
Do you want to amend that motion to pass it on to, right, Sue?
If you choose to approve it, you would need to have it forwarded to DECD for final approval. Your approval is only the local one.
Forwarded on to-
DEC.
DEC.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Councilor Law?
I wanted to bring up that the TIF is already in place. It's not a matter of us accepting the TIF or not. It's how we take care of our part of the money that we get as a town. In 2012, the town officials reviewed the proposed project and negotiated terms for the tax increment of a financing district to support the project as well as generate revenues. That's not the debate here tonight. Amera Maine is now located here in Hampden. That's not the debate here tonight. What I'm concerned about is what is inside the TIF and some of the proposed possible projects going forward. I'm concerned when I hear a couple of councillors, not one, but two during our special planning and development meeting saying that they did not have the time to read the TIF before they voted to push it out here to the council. That's concerning. Everybody in this town is very appreciative that Amera Maine is here. Should we be using this money for economic development? Absolutely. That's not even, not even up for a debate right there. It should be used. I do have four points that I want to bring up individually. And I want to be able to discuss this as a councillor before we push this down to the state for approval. Issue one, it's my intention to make a motion to strike item 13 on page six under the cost of service and equipment. The part I'd like to see struck, to provide skills development and training, including scholarships, to in-state educational institutions or online learning entities when in-state options are not available for jobs created or retained within Hampden. I have a side note on that before we discuss it. According to the MRSP 5225-1C4, these would have to be set aside in training funds. What additional training is actually needed in this case? What equipment is needed to develop additional skills in this? Additional jobs should be part of a general budgetary process as ultimately the town will be picking up the additional expenses. That's issue one. And I'd like to take these one at a time. I only have four, so it's not going to take long.
Okay.
Do I have any feedback on issue one?
I agree.
Well, I've made the motion to strike 13, that part right there.
You can't make, we've got a motion on-
You can make an amendment.
You can, but he may want to wait until he gets them all to make the amendment for whatever you're striking.
Okay, I'll go on to issue two. It's my intention to make a motion to strike part of the language on page five, item 10, cost of funding economic development programs or events developed by the municipality and funding the marketing of the municipality as a business location, including economic development strategic plan and feasibility studies for a downtown development district. The part that we should strike out of this, the development program includes sharing in the support for the town's economic development staff and prorated economic development portion of future comprehensive plans and updates. The comprehensive plan development and update should not be part of this. This should not be funded that. That has to be done every 10 years anyway. That should be, again, part of the budgetary process with the town, not with the TIF money. Left the way it is, this is left for interpretation, for opening and hiring additional staff, for another revision of the 2010 comp plan. This language would be better left out in the wake of the tough comprehensive plan process we recently underwent. Issue number three, my intention to make a motion to strike this language on item 14, page seven, which reads, "The 2010 comprehensive plan has identified an area of land currently owned by the town of Hampden as the location of a future town forest. It is the expressed intent of the community to develop a multipurpose trail system with a parking area in order to provide access to this public land for hiking, mountain biking, recreational activities, and attract people to the community. TIF revenues will provide funding, support to this development initiative. The land in question here is land that was approved by the voters to be purchased with a bond for commercial development. And I do not believe we can legally develop parks there without voter approval or at least, the very least guidance on the legalities of such intentions. This has not been supported in the past and to have this included within the TIF process is not being transparent and forthcoming with the voters of Hampden." Last, issue number four is to make a motion to strike the language on page 24, section six, which reads, "The town manager or her duly-appointed representative is hereby authorized and empowered at her discretion from time to time to make such revisions to the district and development program for the district as the town manager may deem reasonably necessary or convenient in order to facilitate the process for review and approval of the district by the state of Maine Department of Economic and Community Development. Any changes must and should go through the council. And furthermore, sole discretion and the ability to implement change should not be narrowed down to one person. If everything needs to continue to go through the council, this is not needed and would be a good move to eliminate the word and altogether for resolving concerns of some of our residents." My final statements on this, I'm sticking to my recommendations of those four concerns. They're solid, they're sound. I know exactly what the people of Hampden have asked me to do and I intend to continue to be a voice of the people. Not one person has asked me to find ways to spend more money, to hire more staff, develop more parks and trails, or use fuzzy math to justify growing the town's government. This has nothing to do with the trust, but rather everything to do with common sense and transparency. I do not know who will be in the next council, nor do I know who will be the town or the next town manager in the years to come. To set up a TIF with no checks and balances is not helping the town and is not smart business. Constraints and boundaries are needed in these cases and not an open invitation to spend any way a town manager chooses with no approval needed. We're developing a concerning perception of inversion. This is the perception where a town's government is free to do anything it pleases while the citizens may act only by permission. Anything that can be done to alleviate these perceptions should be done with the council as a united group. Thank you.
Councilor Marvel?
Guess a process question. I'm wondering if the consultant that helped develop the plan would like to comment on any of those four. My question in general has to do with everything listed in the TIF and the degree to which council has control over specific actions when taken.
Would you like to address that, Nora?
These are town revenues and on an annual basis, or on an ongoing basis, as your recommendations come from the Planning and Development Committee to expend in one manner or another. Whatever the typical process is for that to flow through is the process that would be for the use of the TIF revenues. And really, probably Sue's the better person to ask. It's not an automatic that it gets, that these funds get spent in any particular way. It still goes through a review process, a council process. Am I correct? I mean, it's the same as any other budget item, it's just that it's outside of the general fund in terms of the pot of money that it's coming from.
The source of funding listed for a project proposed as part of this, the source of funding would be identified as TIF revenues. It's not that I would have the authority to go start something that's on this list and just go do it because it's in the list. That, the expenditure of funds in any project is a budgetary review process.
Absolutely. And the specific language that's in the resolution, in fact, I think there may be some alternative language. It's really meant for technical revisions in order to facilitate the approval of the district.
Tom? We talked about, because that was raised as an issue and we, some of the language was amended to change it so it was only a technical, or it was not, no substantive change or no overall change. Was there a part of this that was changed to?
Well, I think the revised section six is in the council packet. And that was narrowed so the manager can only, the reason to give her that authority is to respond to any issues raised by DECD in their process of reviewing this. If they said, oh, you forgot to dot an i or cross a t, that's what that is intended for. And so before it said for other purposes, we took that out. So it's only for the limited purpose of addressing any issues that might be raised by DECD in its review of the program. So it's not as broad as it was in the original draft.
If I can just take this, with this for one second.
Sure.
Because there is a lot in this. And it's relatively new to some of us. I just want to make sure that just because something is listed in the agreement as an expense does not mean that that will unilaterally, of its own accord, because it's there, have to be an expense. We still have the committee and council control over these expenditures.
Absolutely.
Just as we do over the performance of the town manager.
Yep. And as I said earlier, if you choose to not fund an item at all, that's fine. And if the actual project cost for an item costs more than what's listed and you take revenues, you have the TIF revenues available, the taxes are higher, the valuation is higher and you have additional funds available, you can spend more than is in any given line item. But it is through your regular review process. It's not somebody sitting in a room saying, oh, we have these TIF revenues available and it's there, so we're going to spend it. Goes through your standard municipal process. Welcome.
Any other discussion? Mr. Councilor Shakespeare?
I'd like to say first of all that I am chairperson of the Planning and Development Committee. And I heard this evening that two councillors did not get to read the TIF before it went to council. I can assure you, every councillor, unless they don't read their emails from the town, every councillor had ample opportunity to meet with Dean and to read that TIF before it went to council. He emailed everybody and I personally took advantage of the time myself because I wanted to make sure I knew what it was all about and what I was talking about. I went in, I spent three hours with him. So every councillor had that same opportunity to come in, make a phone call, or to read them. This spending, so-called, on the triangle, this money we are capturing or can capture by this TIF, this money does not have to be spent, as our town manager said. It can be put into an account and held for the purpose of what it says there, economic development. There is not one item there that says we will spend that money on trails. We will spend that money on such and such. It has to go before the council, whatever council there will be, this council or a future council, depending upon what their wishes are. But economic development is so important in this community, as I've heard this evening from residents, so important to reducing and/or keeping the taxes where they are now. As Dean Bennett said, a $500,000 home doesn't pay but one child in school. Spending this money will not increase our taxes, whatever. It comes from the TIF, it goes into the triangle for economic- It comes from the TIF, it goes into the triangle for economic development, for water lines, sewer lines, gas lines, to give an opportunity for other businesses to come to Hamden, because I know personally, we lost one big opportunity this last year, of a big company coming into Hamden, and they chose another town, and we lost it because we did not have the infrastructure, we did not have the pipelines, I say pipeline, I'm talking about water, sewer, and gas, because we had the land, and they would have probably have come here. I just want to make one more point, I heard that our taxes were jacked up last year, well, our taxes were not jacked up last year, they did increase a certain percentage because we had no choice. This town council, I've been on here six years now, town council has done the utmost to keep the taxes down to a minimum, if any increase at all. We have no control over what they do across the street, at the school, we have no control what the state does, what the governor does. If you call, I think my taxes went up $100, if you call that jacked up, well, so be it, I don't. And I think, you know, I'm obviously for the TIF, I think it's the goose that laid the golden egg, and I'm not about to turn it down. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, David, I'd just like to say that what we're talking about here is, basically, it's a template, or what's used in most TIFs, and what it does is it provides flexibility for those funds that we receive. I'm not in a position, nobody on this council is in a position, to tell what's going to happen in the future, and what the future needs are of this town. And to your point, the controls are in place, so future councils can make a decision on whether or not they want to spend that money on whatever. So providing that flexibility, I don't want to hand tie or take away flexibility from future councils, to make decisions they feel are needed at that time, so, that's my point.
This document is titled, "The Economic Development." On the surface, it sounds like a worthwhile endeavor, but as with most government programs, the demons are in the details, and this thing is full of them. The Municipal Tax Increment Finance Program, more commonly referred to as TIF, has been around for a long time in one form or another. The intention of the program is to provide a financing mechanism through which municipalities can sequester tax revenue under the auspices of broadening the commercial tax base. The basic theory expounded by the town, and some of the town, by fellow town counselors, is that a broader commercial tax base is the only way to lower the tax burden on homeowners and small business. This, this TIF does result in an increase in the commercial tax base. What it does not result in is any tax relief to the supposed beneficiaries, homeowners and small business. The demon in this detail is that not one penny of the increased tax revenue will be used to ease the, your tax burden over the next 20 years. In this particular case, there are other tax revenue streams which do accrue to the general fund, such as excise and personal property taxes. In my opinion, these are, these are the only redeeming aspects of this TIF. It remains to be seen whether or not these funds will offset the loss of the refunded money over the next 20 years. Now, I'm not a professional prognosticator, but I will pretend that I am one tonight. I foresee that a yes vote on this will result in an annual tax increase for each year of this TIF, and I stand ready to defend my no vote. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Dupree?
I agree with, in a sense, with everyone. I agree that we need economic development. I agree that the TIF with the mayor is a good thing, because it brought them to the town. I also agree that there are things in this document that I don't feel are, have to do with economic development, like the comprehensive plan updates, the town forest, which, I've heard that term so many times, and there is nowhere that the town has agreed to have a town forest. And I, I did agree with the, with the wording that the town manager had the control, but if that's only for review of the document, then, and not, if the council has to approve any spending of the money, then that part is fine with me. And as far as scholarships, the in-state education, if this, if this money were to be used for things that we're already spending money on, that is included in there, then I would agree with that, but if it's going to be additional things that we're going to do, then I don't agree with that part either. So I'm not saying that I don't agree with the TIF, I think it's a great thing. I, what I would like to see is the people, not just the people that are here, but the voters deciding, do you want this money in the general fund, or do you want this money sheltered for, for this future economic development, understanding that you will, that we will lose some of the money because of the taxes, but we, we've only heard from a few people here, so we're assuming that we know what the people of the town want. We've gotten a few emails, but not that many, and the people that have emailed haven't all read the document either, so that's my opinion.
Counselor Marvel?
Well, let me make a few comments from a rookie point of view. I'm a rookie in terms of this town, I've only lived here four years, and I'm a rookie in terms of formal public service, I've never served on a town council anywhere before. And I will admit, like I mentioned a few minutes ago, this is a dense document, there's a lot to it, and it took several readings and dialogue to get through down to what I consider to be the basics. I'm going to, I'm going to vote to support this, to move it forward tonight. The things that baffle me as a rookie, and I mean this very genuinely, is the difference between the conversations I can have as I walk in my neighborhood, or I get calls from constituents, versus the tone of some of the conversations that take place in these meetings. And it almost feels at times that there are agendas that don't really belong at the local level, that are brought down to the local level, and I, I'm puzzled. I've spent a lot of time as a resident and an employee working in Bangor, and I was a part of a chamber meeting today with city officials, looking at the city of Bangor's consequences of what may happen to the town and the taxpayers in Bangor, according to some of the things proposed in the governor's budget that Lisa was alluding to earlier. I am struck every time I look around that we should be quietly and humbly celebrating this town that we have, in all kinds of ways. And there are services and other sides to the cost of things that have brought people here to live in this community, that we want to live in this community, who help with the tax base and help with the quality of life. I don't think this TIF is perfect. The first criticism I would levy if I had time to do it and be productive about it would be to reduce the number of years, I think it's too long, but that's just my opinion. But I think we have a chance to keep working together, I think this is only one piece of a bigger puzzle. I think that we've got a professional town staff, in both the town manager and the Director of Economic Development, that we should be celebrating, not trying to micromanage. And some of what we're talking about tonight, in my opinion, is the council getting too low down in the weeds, trying to do what professional staff is charged to do. We have oversight and control over that. It doesn't mean we do that work. So I, I'm happy that this is happening, I feel like I've walked into a great time in this town, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, as imperfect as it may be, and I think we're on to better things.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Wild, do you want to complete your?
I, I'm like Counselor Marvel over there, I'm somewhat of a rookie also, so I'm not sure exactly how to proceed on all of this. There's still a couple of items on there, even after hearing everything, that I have a little concern with. Number one being the town forest. We just came through in 2012, the really, really tough time with the comprehensive plan. To bring up the town forest again on another document just a couple of years later, I think is the root of the concern. If we can strike out the town forest, because I just can't wrap my hands around how a town forest helps out economic development, I absolutely, absolutely agree that this TIF is a good thing. It got in a huge company in Hamden. I am very, very grateful to have this company here in Hamden. A lot of the folks that I talk to are very grateful to have these companies come into Hamden. That's not the issue. The issue goes right down to just a couple of items inside that TIF. Again, 2012, we had a rough year in this town, and it was all about land and the comprehensive plan that we had to go through, and we had to change it. And thank God that we had a lot of good people working on that community, some are sitting up here, some are sitting out here tonight, and some of them are probably watching at home, but to see the town forest come up yet again in another document, I think, is the absolute root of the problem. If we can just come to terms on that one.
You could make an amendment to the TIF. Motion to amend that we delete, which would be page six, item 14.
That is my intention at this point. If I can see that again. Page, it's actually, item 14, page seven.
Section two of, item 14, section two?
Yes.
Just say you'd like to make a motion to...
Just to strike out the town forest. You strike that?
amend.
That's my, that's my motion to strike that.
From the original TIF?
From the original TIF.
I'll second that.
Questions?
Just, just a comment to go back to it. This came up, I think, in Planning and Development, and it was within the general discussion My intention isn't to get us stuck here, counselor, I'm just thinking, you know, does something exist on paper, because it's on paper, but does it have any substance if it's completely subject to future council control and decision-making? It, it of itself being listed here may be a flashpoint for some people in this town, and I understand that, I don't want to go backwards, but it only has as much merit, it only has as much content as the council chooses to act on. So I'm with you, but I don't see this as a necessary action.
Well, I, I think my opinion is, from different people I've talked to, they're, they're in agreement with the TIF. A lot of people do have an issue with that being in there, they want that money used for economic development and infrastructure, so if Mr. Counselor Wild puts that in as an amendment to the TIF, I'm fine with it, and I think it's, it's okay.
We have to take a vote on that.
If there's no more discussion.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to say, I have, I concur with Counselor Marvel, I just don't see it as an issue, I don't see any of them as an issue, it's up to, it's just wording. I know it's not a town forest, that's not what the purpose of it was for, that's just a little bit of something in there, and, you know, I, I just don't see the critical of it that important, so, you know.
So we want to make an amendment to eliminate item two on page seven, is that correct? Dealing with the town forest?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to strike the town forest.
I've got a question, is, is that only eliminating the wording town forest, or is that going to eliminate the area that is indicated as the town forest?
There isn't a town forest.
I know there's not.
Right.
I know there's not one.
But that's just saying, we're not going to spend money to create one.
But the area that we've indicated there, was indicated as a town forest, is the LLB property, right?
Which will still stay as commercial property.
Okay.
So we're ready to take a vote? All in favor of accepting the TIF with the amendment, raise your hand.
We're just, we're just voting on the amendment first.
Okay, sorry. It's all right, we're just voting for the amendment. All in favor? So now...
How many more?
Five to two, I believe. So now we'll take a vote on the TIF itself.
Well, no, unless he has...
Unless there's more discussion or amendments. Seeing none?
I...
Okay.
Sorry, I, I would actually like to make a motion to strike the, the portion of future comprehensive plan and updates, because I, I don't... In number 10, and again, it's just a wording thing, but... Page six, yes. I, I agree with the economic development strategic planning feasibility studies and everything else in there, but, but the comprehensive plan, again, has to be done every 10 years, and the other one took a lot of time to do, so I'd like that to be out of this document. So that's my motion.
Just so, just so I can, I'm clear on the motion, was it to strike all of number 10, or just?
Sorry, no, just, just the part that says, "Including but not limited to perforated economic development portions of future comprehensive plan and update, plans and updates," it's one sentence.
So starting with including?
Yes, and ending with updates.
Okay.
I don't think you should take out the including, because that refers to the items after that, too.
Okay, so we've been including, start with but.
Prorated, okay.
Prorated, yes, including but not limited to, I guess would stay.
And ending with updates?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ready to take a vote on the next amendment? All in favor of deleting that wording? All opposed? Five to, yeas. Any other discussion? Are we ready to take a vote on the TIF? Motion to, we still have it on the floor.
Right, but it's as amended.
As amended, so we got to have another motion?
As amended.
Second.
I'll second the motion as amended.
I don't think you need a new motion, you're voting on the original motion as amended. Yeah, by the previous two motions.
All in favor? Opposed? Six one, yes. And at this point, we'll take a five-minute break, thank everybody for coming in.